Zoning Commission hearing. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Nicole, would you care to introduce everyone?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Nicole Cromwell. I am the zoning coordinator. I will be presenting the draft zoning code sections to the County Zoning Commission for their hearing tonight. Monica Plecker, Planning Division Manager, has joined us this evening and she will be helping us with our Zoom meeting. Then the County Zoning Commission is Tyler Bush. Troy Boucher and Jerry Ray are in attendance this evening. Tammy Dynas is our planning clerk and she will be taking the minutes of the meeting and answering public comment phone at (237) 6120. And then Jeanette Feig is helping us with the sign-in for the public who's attending this evening. We also have the President of the Planning Board, Woody Woods, in attendance, as well as Randy Hafer of our consultant team is here in person. Our consultant team members, Elizabeth Garvin and Leslie Oberholzer, are joining us on Zoom.
Thank you very much. I'll open it up to the public comment for any non-agenda items. Anybody wishing to call in, (237) 6120 is the phone number for any item not on this evening's agenda. I see no one come forward. Do we have any calls?
I have no calls.
Okay, thank you. The public comment for non-agenda items is closed. And we'll move on to regular business.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This evening, we're going to cover the commercial, public, industrial districts for the county and the planned neighborhood developments, a new type of zoning tool for use primarily in Lockwood. So first, let's review the basis for these zoning code updates are the 2016 Lockwood growth policy and the 2008 county growth policy. And tonight, we are going to cover some planned neighborhood development zones that were created for the use in Lockwood, as well as a refreshment of our commercial, industrial, and public zone districts out in the county. The Steering Committee that was appointed by the City-County Planning Board in June of 2017 consisted of 20 members from the public. And they worked on how to craft and arrange the work of the working groups to help guide this zoning code update. And they set out guiding principles for our work in January of 2018. And those are listed in on the screen here. So we were clarifying and simplifying the code. Right now, it consists of 450 pages. Sometimes where consistency was a problem, and so we've had to reinterpret the code many times over the years. So clarifying that and simplifying that and writing it in plain English was important to the Steering Committee. We were also going to focus our efforts on regulating the issues and land use topics that matter to our community. So there are many types of land use issues that just don't ever come up in Yellowstone County or the city of Billings. So we decided not to focus on those, but focus on issues that were important to our community. And preserving, protecting the rights of owners and residents, very important, as we rewrite the code, to preserve those rights that have accrued under current zoning and carry those forward where they're appropriate. But also thinking of the adjacent owners and the adjacent residents when we crafted the code. To prevent conflicts, the next guiding principle the Steering Committee set forward. But we also wanted to give developers options to use in different contexts throughout the community. And we wanted to make sure that we were coding and writing code to maintain those neighborhood characteristics that we do care about and making sure that those can carry forward into the future. We have gaps and voids in our code and we set forward to fill those. We covered a couple of those topics yesterday evening for short-term rentals and accessory dwelling units. Tonight, we're going to talk about Lockwood's Town Center and how we have built a tool to help them create a Town Center for Lockwood. And last but not least, was ensuring that we supported the economic foundation of our community by making sure our regulations around those foundations was solid and helped those businesses grow. So we're going to jump right in. Our existing zone districts for Yellowstone County for commercial, public, and industrial districts are virtually the same as the city of Billings, with the exception of the medical corridor, which is not, there's no part of the medical corridor in the county, and the Ebird Zone Districts, there's no part of the Ebird that's in the county, and the South 27th Street District Corridor, that commercial zone district is only in the city as well. But still, there are 11 different types of commercial and public and industrial zone districts for use in the county right now. And those range from the RP zoning, which is just for offices, all the way up to heavy industrial, and the large category of public zoning that we use for everything from public parks to the landfill to the airport. So those are the zone districts we have to choose from now. The proposed zone districts lineup for the county is based on the idea that although it would reduce the number of districts, it really reflects the type of commercial and industrial and public developments that we have in Yellowstone County right now. The exception, of course, is Lockwood because they have water and sewer available there, and we'll talk more about that later on in the presentation. But those zone districts are listed below. Those corridor mixed-use zones, the neighborhood office zone and the neighborhood mixed-use zone would be districts that are only available in Lockwood and through the planned neighborhood development. They are mapped in Lockwood right now where those development styles and characteristics already exist. So the proposed seven districts range from just general commercial use, which includes everything from offices to shopping, retail centers, not the really big ones, though. Those would probably go into a heavy commercial zone district. So the general commercial zone would encompass community commercial, some highway commercial, but not every highway commercial zone. The heavy commercial zone district would pull in from the highway commercial zone district that we have now and some controlled industrial that's not exactly industrial, it's more highway commercial. So those would be mapped as heavy commercial zones. Then the light industrial and heavy or heavy industrial are the corollary to the controlled industrial and heavy industrial that we have now. Those zone districts are going to remain virtually the same as they are now. And then the public zone, because we used it so widely and made it unpredictable, you don't know if you're going to be next to a park or the landfill when you get a public zone next door. We broke the public zone district into three different zone districts. So Public 1 is for your open space and parks and even active recreation areas like golf courses. Public 2 is intended for civic uses, schools, churches, other community facilities that are just one building or one or two buildings, kind of tucked into neighborhoods sometimes. And then the Public 3 zone is really intended for our big campuses of public uses, the airport, Metro Park, Rocky Mountain College, MSU Billings, and the medical corridor. So we created a new zone just for those campus-type developments, hoping that we make that, when we make these distinctions and the mapping, will indicate to folks around there what that intended use is. So for the commercial districts in the county, the general commercial is either a standalone retail or a multi-tenant retail business. It can also be Yellowstone Perk on Highway 87 North, or here is Baretooth Harley-Davidson out on South Frontage Road. So those are the types of general commercial that that would apply to. It is a very much like the current community commercial zoning district, so it allows a wide array of commercial uses. But for uses that are a little heavier, they have bigger buildings, they need bigger pieces of land for parking merchandise or for parking materials and equipment, that would be the heavy commercial zone. And as I said, that's more a corollary to the highway commercial zoning that we have now. So I pulled these pictures to show you where the draft map is showing that CX, heavy commercial zoning. So everything from Slumberland, which is really just a huge retail, single-building use, to Peterbilt and Titan Machinery, some RV sales because you have very large vehicles for sale there. So that's the type of uses that are proposed for that heavy commercial zone. The heavy commercial and general commercial requirements for setbacks and building heights and lot coverage will be the same, but the uses will be different. Then we move on to the industrial districts. And as I said, the controlled industrial we have now will go to what we're calling light industrial, and those uses will be very much the same. Those places that we have zoned heavy industrial, such as American Steel and ExxonMobil Refinery, those will stay heavy commercial and all of those uses will be carried forward and they'll have similar requirements as they do now in those zone districts. Moving on to public. So Public 1 is for parks and recreation and open space. As I said, it can cover everything from a golf course to a playfield to the Four Dances Natural Area. Those will be zoned Public 1. So they're predictable, that's what you expect to happen there, and that's what will happen there. The Public 2 is for schools and churches and other civic or religious assembly-type uses, and those are mapped according to those uses. Because right now, we have schools in residential zones, we have churches in residential zones, we have churches in commercial zones, we have schools in commercial zones. It's very unpredictable to people when they look at a map or try to interpret what is intended for a property if you can do everything everywhere at any time. So we have created this zone district of P2, Public 2, to indicate where those parcels exist and where if we know that someone has a piece of property that's currently zoned residential, but they intend to have a school or some other assembly-type use there, they would have let us know and we would have zoned that as Public 2. During the public comment, but I can answer questions after I'm done or if the zoning commission has a question.
Question for Nicole?
Go ahead.
Do you have a question for Nicole?
No.
Okay, all right. But we will be taking public comment and questions after I've, okay. So the Public 3 is a zone district that is intended to be for large parcels that have medical, educational, or civic uses. There's more than three buildings, there's lots of activity on the property, and so there's really only seven parcels in the city and county that got the Public 3 zone. But we created that so that campuses, large developments of a single use devoted to a single type of either medical, educational, civic purpose could be mapped and they would have their own type of regulations within the zoning code. So instead of, you know, creating a special corridor district for South 27th Street and a corridor district for the medical corridor, we said, okay, there's three different kinds of campuses and let's develop a set of regulations that would apply to all campuses and then specialize regulations for those three different types. Which brings us to planned neighborhood developments. As a new zoning tool, both the city and the county issues working groups were proposed this new type of tool. One in the city would use it for developments that are on the edge of the city that want to come into the city to have public city services. So the city requirement would be that they would submit a zone change and an annexation at the same time to the city.
Excuse me, Nicole?
Yep.
Mr. is having more time here or down here?
Okay, I will talk this way then.
Okay.
Okay, sorry. Or if you want to give me the mic.
Even better.
Okay, I'll try not to create feedback. We tried that the last time and it was a little dicey. Anyway, the planned neighborhood development zoning tool is intended to be used for new developments or redevelopments of three acres or more, either on the edge of the city where they intend to annex to the city for city services, or in the Lockwood or any other county water and sewer district. There's only one now and that's Lockwood. So there are four types that we created. One is a mixed-use zone that you have a set of zoning district types that you have to use in the mixed-use plan development. The mixed residential, which is a wide range of housing choice zone districts that you'd have to use. The neighborhood, planned neighborhood development is just, it's more of a housing type, either a single family or two-family, and you mix that throughout. And then, of course, the town center planned neighborhood development, which allows you to use many different zone districts within a town center to create that vibrancy or look and feel of a downtown. Each one of these planned neighborhood development types requires open space and active open space. So we can just go through them really quickly. So the first type, kind of go from the lowest intensity level all the way up to the town center. So the neighborhood, planned neighborhood development uses or requires a mix of neighborhood or N districts, which cannot be chosen or used in any other part of the county except for a county water and sewer district. So here's a layout, an illustration of what that would look like, showing the main street grid, each different zone type. This does also show some alleys, but you don't have to show that. But it does need to show the connection to existing streets. It needs to show the basic zone district distribution and layout and where those pieces of open space, Public 1 zoning would be, either a small neighborhood parks or plazas or gathering spaces. So in the neighborhood, there are only three, you only have to use three districts and there are some limitations on the, what we're calling the NX1, which is a one-to-four family zone district. It's very different than our current multifamily zoning, which allows you to do any number of dwelling units based on how big your lot is. This new NX1 zone is just for one-to-four family buildings. You couldn't do a sixplex or a tenplex or a twelveplex. The NX1 is just one-to-four families allowed. It is also very much a form-based district. In other words, there's no minimum lot area, there's lot width requirements, there's build two zones as opposed to setbacks as minimums. It has, there's required transparency on the front of buildings that face streets, doors and windows, in other words. Fancy term is transparency, but doors and windows. And roof pitch is important in some of these districts. The next one is the mixed residential. In this one, you can use more of those NX districts than the neighborhood district. So you can use everything from N1 and N2 to, all the way up to the NX2 in the mixed residential. And this is just an example of how that street grid would lay out and how the mix of zone districts could be applied. Again, with the open space shown. I don't know if you recognize this, but these were actual map sections taken from our local maps. This is Western Sky, done as a planned neighborhood development. This one is, let's see if I can recall, yes, this is, this is the mixed use, PND. So this is where you start to build in some commercial and some corridor mixed use, some neighborhood mixed use, as well as pulling in some of those higher-density residential districts, as well as the open space into a neighborhood. This is an illustration of the mixed use district using the Zimmerman property at Zimmerman Trail and Grand Avenue as an example property, how that would lay out. But you can go as small as three acres. If you have more than 30 acres in a undeveloped parcel, you can mix and match your planned neighborhood development type, but you have to have at least 30 acres before you can choose another one. I believe that's right. Might have to check my notes. Maybe it's 10. Here is the illustration drawing of the neighborhood town center concept, taking the raw code and applying it in a concept to the parcel of land, or some of it anyway, that was identified in the Lockwood growth policy for the development of a town center. So this includes all of the different zone types that are allowed in the city of Billings for mixed use, for higher-density residential use, and builds in plazas as opposed to just little parks, neighborhood parks. And so this is just a concept drawing of what that would lay out as a town center type of development using the regulations that we've currently built them. So as an example, I pulled some pictures, some street views of parcels in Lockwood that currently have those mixed use or commercial corridor mixed-use zones. So I only found one piece in Lockwood that was currently zoned neighborhood mixed use, and that is the Assisted Living Center, I believe it's on Rosebud Drive. And then the corridor mixed-use 1. And the corridor mixed-use 1 is for types of land uses that should be compatible with adjacent residential uses, not always, but the corridor mixed-use zone district has some standards for when you are adjacent to a residential area or another mixed-use area. So here's two property examples, the Lockwood IGA and the three Gs on, just before the split of Old Harden and 87 East. Then the corridor mixed-use 2 is intended for larger developments. They have bigger buildings, they have more intense uses that you don't necessarily want to have directly adjacent to residential neighborhoods or residential uses, although those still can occur, but they're typically large, big developments. So Bretts RV and Lockwood Square is an example of where that corridor mixed-use 2 zone would apply. All right. So we kind of ran through that. I'm sure we'll go back. So we are in the second of your series of public hearings for the County Zoning Commission. Our next set of hearings, we just finalized today, will be in mid-September, and that will be combined hearings with the City Zoning Commission, and will cover signs, landscaping, off-street parking, proportionate compliance, administrative procedures, and non-conformities. So, and then to wrap up, the last week of September, we will go over individually as a County Zoning Commission and then as a City Zoning Commission, the draft map update and administrative procedures. So zone changes, special reviews, variances, all types of permitting that are just administrative rather than public. So we'll go through that part of the code and then we'll wrap up and schedule your County Zoning Commission discussion on your recommendation to the county commissioners in October, and the same for the City Zoning Commission. And I'd be happy to take any of your questions and go back to various slides. I'll bring the microphone to you.
Thank you, Nicole. Either of you two have any questions for Nicole at this point? Jerry?
What with them housing limits, we talked about ADAs, what do they call them?
Accessory dwelling units?
ADUs.
Yeah, ADUs.
Right, accessory dwelling units, we covered last night. So in the county, accessory dwelling units would be allowed only in the agricultural zone, and then special review approval in the other residential districts in the county.
I like where I'm sitting on 20 lots out here in the county, ready to build on. Can I do the ADAs in those?
I'm not sure that that parcel is even in our zoning jurisdiction. So that wouldn't be affected by our zoning.
So I could go ahead and do it, but not worry about that?
Well, you'd have to do a subdivision, at least.
Excuse me?
I think you have to get approval for a subdivision for rental.
Subdivision.
Buildings for lease or rent in unzoned areas applies.
Right. You have some, there's some regulatory control, but not zoning.
I don't know what it would be.
Buildings for lease or rent is the regulation adopted by the county that would apply in unzoned areas where you want to have multiple units on one parcel.
I didn't hear what you said. I didn't hear what you said.
You may have come forward if he can't hear you. Have you come to the microphone?
In the unzoned lands of the county, they've adopted a regulation called Buildings for Lease or Rent. It was something that I think came out of the 2013 legislature, and it regulates multiple units on one parcel of land. So, that's what would apply. It wouldn't be zoning. It would be the Buildings for Lease or Rent regulation.
Does that include commercial residential?
It addresses number of multiple dwellings on one lot.
Where do we get all that information from?
Come see me. I can, I can hook you right up. I can also email you those Buildings for Lease or Rent regulations. I can, I can do that actually from here. Okay.
Thank you, Monica. Does anyone else have any other questions? At this time, I'll open it up to the public. If you have any questions or comments, please put your name and address for the record.
Hi, everybody. I'm Bill Cole, and I wanted to get up here before Conrad does because I got to leave. I've been out all night. I've got to get to a, another event, so I apologize about that. Nicole, in the public sections 27 hyphen 501, this is just a technical suggestion, not a lot of substance, but in 501B, you'll see public, civic, and institutional small, and it refers to these examples as such as religious assembly, public safety facilities, et cetera, et cetera, which is a good thing. It just makes it clear that those are examples, not you're only restricted to those categories. So, in P three, the campus one, you'll see, it doesn't have that kind of such-as language. So, it says the P three district is intended to be used for multistructure and use institutions that are developed in a campus-like environment. I think that's the generic description, which makes sense. But then, the second sentence says, "P three zoning is available for medical campuses, educational campuses, and civic campuses with three or more principal buildings." So, the concern would be that by listing three things, if you're in something that doesn't fall within those three, you're excluded from P three, which I don't think is the intent. So, if that's not the intent, if it is, well, okay, but if it's not, you probably want to say, "P three zoning is available for facilities such as medical, educational, et cetera," just so it's clear those are examples. And specifically, you might want to think about adding religious in that category of examples. I'm thinking a facility like Faith Chapel on Shiloh that may have more than two principal buildings. I don't know how many they have, but they've got a lot there. So, would they be P threes? So, anyway, just to think, if those are, are those, it tends to be limited to those three categories.
Well, we didn't want to make a specific category for religious assembly uses, but typically, when you have more than two buildings that have a religious organization, it's for educational purposes. So, for example, the Catholic Schools property on Woody and Colton Boulevard may end up as a P three because they have more than two buildings, but it would be a P three educational or education slash civic. I think our intent was that the civic, the civic P three would apply to religious or civic assembly uses.
Okay, as long as everything could be shoehorned in those three categories, it's only if you want to be more generic in that. So, you can think about that.
Well, also, in the use table, we have it as P three ed, P three med, P three civic.
Oh, okay, so they really are broken down to those, just those three?
Yeah.
Okay.
They are right now.
Well, that was the comment to think about.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to make a comment or ask a question?
I'd like to, my name is Poirot Strobe. I'd like to submit formally a couple of things that I've given to Nicole. One is, the first one, the main one, is a thesis by John Halverson, who is a graduate of Bozeman and Architectural School. And then, he just finished his thesis, and that's what this is, a thesis in, it's called School Zone, A New Model for Suburban Development in Montana. And I think they've had a chance to look at it. I just want to make sure that it gets into the record formally. John's done a really, really good job of basically talking about walkable schools and the value to, not only to the education of the kids, but the real value to the neighborhoods and to the communities. So, that's what I'll do.
So noted. Look, he has our picture.
Anyone else wishing to ask a question? Please come forward.
Blaine Pobler, 5403 Canyon West. So, at three of the previous public hearings regarding the new zoning code, I've stood up here and said that I disagree with the parking requirements laid out in the new zoning, to where you're not allowed to have a new retail facility with your parking in the front. I believe that now you're required to park in the rear or on the side of the building. And I think that not only residentially is it inappropriate and a big burden to the developer or the residents to have to park in the rear of your house rather than have a front driveway. Now that we're in the commercial end of things, in Billings, Montana, people like to drive up to a retail store, and they like to pull up to the front of the building and get out and go in, to save 10 steps, I guess. But that's the way it is in retail, and I would suggest offices where your clients come to your office. I don't think it's appropriate for zoning rules to dictate how you get into your building or not. And furthermore, I don't think it's appropriate for zoning to dictate how many windows are on the front of your building, or doors, or the pitch of your roof. I think that's a private matter that should be laid out in, say, some CCNRs of the overall development. So, I just want to be sure that I'm on record for four times in these public hearings saying that I don't think it's appropriate for us to mandate how you set up your parking to force people to use side and rear entrances. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have a question, Jerry?
I think them rules came out of the E-Bird, didn't it, Blaine? That's one of the things that made the hair stand up on the back of my neck, too. We can't have that. How do we get rid of that, Nicole?
Well, the zoning commission can take up recommendations on the draft code when we finish our hearings. If that's something you want to make a note of, so that when you're discussing your recommendation, you can make a motion to amend that part of the draft code.
Can we make it right now?
No. You haven't heard that part of the code yet. Parking districts will be next month, off-street parking. I mean, it is part of the corridor mixed use zone districts. It is part of the neighborhood zone districts for the city, and that can be used in a planned neighborhood development. But as far as the basic county commercial zone districts and the basic county residential districts, the parking restrictions are different.
Something new. This wasn't like that before.
Right, but what I'm saying is that the form-based standards for the mixed-use zones and for the higher-density neighborhood districts don't apply throughout the county. They can only be applied in Lockwood, and they're only when you're doing new zoning, it has to be through a planned neighborhood development application. So, it's not everywhere in the county.
So, in some parts of the county, you can't have parking out front, and other parts you can, is that what you're saying?
The only part of the county that has the form-based zone districts allowed is Lockwood. It's not everywhere in the county. So, for example, the heavy commercial zone doesn't have a regulation under heavy commercial that says you can't have parking out front. That is not in the draft regulations. But if you're a corridor mixed-use zone, which we have applied in Lockwood to those existing corridor mixed-use districts, then any new development in those districts would have to file, follow the form requirements for the corridor mixed-use zones. It doesn't make them change anything on their property now. It doesn't require them to move their parking behind their building unless they scrape the lot and start over.
So, anything new would have to be parking in the rear?
Not everything new. We're going to cover proportionate compliance, which deals with how you get closer to being in compliance with those site development standards for existing developments that are redeveloping, or remodeling, or putting on an addition. And I could require 100% compliance for existing buildings that are only putting on a little, you know, a patio, or a little tiny addition to a building. So, that's also part of the draft code.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, zoning commission. My name is Jeff Bullman. I work for the Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, 1371 Rim Top Drive. We manage all the school trust lands, and we probably, I would guess, are the largest landowner by acreage in the county zoning jurisdiction. Primarily, the lands that we have are kind of northwest of Billings, kind of west of the airport. I'm going to talk about a familiar topic, unfortunately, to some of the working group members I was also on, just talking about alternative energy. And just a couple of things, I know that, you know, we hashed over, you know, those discussions. You know, one of the things that I did not agree with, but is in the code, is not allowing wind or solar in the agricultural district. I really think that, especially wind, can be appropriate in agricultural district because it's not an exclusive use. Solar is pretty exclusive as far as the use, that it pretty, it takes up pretty much all the land. With wind energy, you can still run cattle if you have wind turbines up there. It's not the primary use of the land. So, just throw that out. But in looking through the proposed regulations, a couple of things that jumped out at me in seeing that alternative energy, whether it's solar or wind, the tier three, the biggest, the utility scale, basically, well, more than a megawatt, which is, is not that much really anymore, especially for wind, that those require special review in the I two, which is the heavy industrial district. Right below wind is refineries. Refineries are allowed in the I two. They are not currently allowed outright in the I two. They require special review. So, I would suggest that that is another drafting error, that there was not an intention, I don't think, to allow refineries outright in the heavy industrial district. Refineries are a very noxious use, very much a needed use, but it's definitely not one that you just want to go to get a zone change and allow it. The other thing is in the part of the code or the table that addresses utilities and talks about more traditional quote-unquote utility generation, whether that would be gas, coal, coke, like the Yellowstone facility over in Lockwood, those facilities also are allowed outright in I two. And I think energy production, however you generate electricity, we should be treating it all the same, whether it's, if it's wind, whether it's solar, if it's natural gas, if it's coal, whatever the method that you're using, you should allow that. If you don't think that there will be a new coal, or a new electric generation plant, there very well could be, because Northwestern Energy is looking for generation, you know, regardless of what happens in Coal Strip. And there's a need, there's a load demand in Billings because of the crap plant going away. So, something to keep in mind. I think that with all those, there should be parity. The other thing that I would note in the, in the tables back, like on page 38, which is in the solar, I believe, and it's also the same in the wind, you know, in the, these supplemental pages, I guess, you know, like this, that there's a table in both of those sections that has whether the uses are permitted, not allowed, or allowed by special review. And in the, the two industrial districts are grouped together in this table. And so, on the table, it shows that in the I one and I two district for solar, that a tier three facility requires special review, and that conflicts with the, this table. And that's the same for wind as well. So, just need to look and make sure that both of those tables match up, if we're going to have a table in the back in that supplemental, that it matches with what's in there, or we just get rid of the table. But those are my comments, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bullman. Are there any other comments from the crowd? Anybody, has anybody called in to make any comments? Give that number to the other. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Jerry?
I agree with what Moses said.
I can. Anyone else? Anyone call us, Tammy?
Ask them, Paul.
Okay. Anything else, Nicole?
No. I will see you on the 14th of September at a regular meeting date, and then on the 15th and 16th, either in person or on Zoom, if you can make it on Zoom, for our joint city and county zoning commission hearings. We will start covering those sections of the code that are common to both, that are very similar to the city and the county. So, landscaping, off-street parking, proportionate compliance, signs, fun stuff, right?
Do you have a date and place for that?
Yes, September 15th, 4:30, and September 16th, 4:30, in this room.
Okay. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.